Okay, let's start with the question.
The citizens of the United States of America and in their power, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, call for us.
Trustee Trombley, here. Trustee Frederick, here. Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Amy Garrick, you're excused.
Motion to approve the minutes of January eight, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
On the second?
Second.
Any changes, additions, deletions?
No, because everything was good.
There's no discussion? I'm trying to think of saying aye for approval.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications notices, general question period from oversight of the community. Yes, we have no one here. Mr. Tatro, you're on.
Well, January was a cold month. I'm sure nobody needs to hear that, but... So things were kind of slow. I've just been following up on ongoing issues. People responded to some letters I sent out. Contacted a couple of different people. Did that final inspection for the animal issue we had here. Other than that, did some filing, put some papers away, cleaned my desk.
It surprised me when he cleans his desk. It surprised me. You've placed another call for Mr. Bernier?
Yes.
Okay. I thought I had another question here, but I'll have to think about it.
The one on Cherry Street, I forgot to mention that. She did contact me with the debris next to the bike path. And she's well aware of it, and as soon as they can, they fully intend on getting rid of it. They agree it was disgusting, so I was glad to hear that.
This is the owner's that I found, pick?
Yeah, yeah. I'd sent him a letter a month or so ago.
I remember it was on that, on this other item that's been taking us for a long time to get squared away. There was an interesting letter to the editor, not a letter to the editor, but I think it was Sunday's paper.
An article?
An article in there about that, yeah.
Yeah.
About how difficult it is to get on planes and, you know, without having to set aside an animal of some sort.
Yeah.
There was a news article about somebody who wanted to take a peacock from New York.
I think so.
New York to California. They wouldn't let her on a plane.
On that note, do we have to come up with a policy for this, or is that organization going to send us one?
I have heard nothing from that office. Remember, they were supposed to mail us the rules and regulations.
Right, I thought they were going to send us like a template of what an ordinance would look like.
Yeah, and a poster to put on the wall. None of it's...
Okay.
Heard of none of it. And I guess I could call Mr. Bernier, but not going to.
What deems an animal a comfort animal?
Oh.
Anything.
A doctor. Basically.
Basically.
All I have to do is write your letter for anything, any animal.
You can get on the internet, and it's full of doctors that'll give you all kinds of certifications.
And now the Alliance are making you document that that animal has been trained not to cause a ruckus on the plane.
Okay. If you're going to have a comfort animal, like, you know, your dog should be vaccinated, your cats should be vaccinated.
Yes.
Are these types of animals required to be vaccinated? I mean, I don't...
No.
I thought there was something that they had to show that...
Probably Reevy shot.
Yeah, they have... They have to show that they've been trained, and they have...
No.
Their doctor. Yeah, they had a doctor.
No, just, you know, because you just don't know if this issue may come up again, and it's good to have this.
Properly correct. All right. Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, I got a question, I guess, and a comment. When I went out for signatures this past couple of weeks, I had a couple of folks complaining about some of the personal properties of the village being full of garbage and, you know, why isn't that being taken care of, so... Wondering it up to you, maybe you could make a round and...
I mean, they got a call, let me know what they're looking at. I know of a couple, but, again, with the snow and the time of year, nothing is going to happen until the ground loosens up. You know, they'll pick at it here and there, but usually after Easter, I try to get aggressive with it and get after the ones that have garbage. And there are, there's a few, there are some.
But I don't know all of them, so if they got complaints, they should call and leave a message or something, so I have an idea of what... I did tell them to call the village office and the code enforcement.
I haven't gotten any calls, so...
To enforce our policies, but I wanted to bring it up to you, maybe you could take a ride around and see. Somebody that's...
Oh, there's...
Their yards are really in bad shape. That was a complaint I was getting.
Yeah. There's a couple.
Okay.
The same ones all the time.
Yeah, so you probably have an idea where to go. At what place, you know?
I noticed a bit more on South Street up there.
I was one of the locations, I believe. Upper South Street.
Yeah.
So if you could look into it, I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah.
Any more for Mark? Okay. A little update here. The grant application has been submitted to NYSARDA, New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, to help offset the cost of the wastewater blower project. This is a grant for fifty thousand dollars. We should be notified of the award in the next couple of months. I'm going to recommend to the board that we continue to move forward sooner than later, using funds that we have in reserve for this replacement project to get this completed sooner than if we wait a couple of months for the grant award. We will need to seek bids for this project. Engineers will need more time for project development, and hopefully we can compete this, or complete this replacement project by the end of late summer, early fall. The town has reached an agreement with the water project bonding company for a negotiated amount to finish necessary water hookups and restoration. The village, with legal advice, agreed to join the town regarding this agreement because we needed to make sure that our restoration needs would be addressed as well as those in the town. Not a good situation, but the best we're going to get at this point in time. No recent update on the renovations on the village office. The ground radar process or test was completed, and a few areas of concern were located. We are awaiting recommendations from DEC and Atlantic Testing to determine the extent of the problem or problems, and how best to deal with them. This may be a very expensive remediation for the village, and when we have more information, I will bring it to the board's attention. We are compiling figures so we can move on replacing the water line from Ashline Drive to the vault near the village office. This is a line that has repeatedly caused leaking problems, and it would be wise to replace it as soon as possible. Once we have figures, calls will go out to our political representatives seeking their help in paying for this replacement. The working plan is to replace four hundred feet of pipe with valves and a new fire hydrant at Ashline Drive. Have you forgotten anything there? Hopefully, we will have figures soon on the cost, and we will have to make decisions on how this replacement will be handled, contracted or done in-house by our DPW crew. We recently attended a youth program meeting. There was some discussion about cost requests from another community, the relevance of only having fourteen percent of the summer program participants, baseball, softball, t-ball, and soccer, and how future payments were to be allocated. It was felt that we in the village and the town need to identify locations where these sports can be conducted, thereby increasing local participation, be less expensive, and remove some of the travel restrictions for our local youth to participate in these activities. Currently, with the number of children involved and the cost of the program, it is important that we identify other venues to keep the summer activity up and running. We have sent a letter to St. Mary's. I talked to Mr. Valaket this morning about using the old elementary school. He seemed pretty receptive, except that he had to speak to some other folks first, that he's looking to either transfer or continue working on the property to change it to the apartment dealings that he wanted to do in the beginning. But he seemed very receptive. He just wanted to take the time to talk to them first and see what kind of deal was going to be worked out there. We also have the fields in Perry's... Perry Mills, I always want to add a N S R.
Yeah, I did too.
That we can use up there for baseball, and that's a town field that we can use. It's supposed to be a very nice field after they rework it, so... We'll have more information on that. The decision has to be made soon so that we can get the applications out to the schools so the kids can sign up. But with fourteen percent, that was, what, thirty kids?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two kids out of two hundred and fifty-some. We hope that by bringing those sports, if we can find locations, bringing those sports back to the village and the town areas, we will increase our numbers. And it would be easier for the kids that they can ride their bikes to the ballgames and, you know, instead of having to find transportation to a neighboring community. And as a reminder, village elections are the twentieth of March from noon to nine. We have two very important trustee positions on the ballot, so please exercise your right to vote. Thank you. I have trustee Garrick's report here that I will share with the board. My report is the following. Both grants were submitted, and we'll let you know when and if we get them. There is another grant available due at the end of March for health and wellness. I am thinking to submit a multi-use court, such as pickleball, and then convert it to an ice rink. Need to figure cost and amount of the grant available. This does have in-kind component, which will be no issue, as I am sure we will get plenty of volunteers. Sorry, I am missing the meeting, and she sends her apologies and report. So thank you. Tom, since you're on the short end of the table here today, we'll start with you.
Mayor, did I have any report tonight?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Ken?
Well, we have had some recent events that were very popular. I just want to thank Tracy Decost and Ron Gregoire and Jeff Menick for providing the music. Great crowd, a lot of fun. And thanks to Peter Gallagher, who was the chef in the first cooking class, and tells me that I need to buy some more chairs because we ran out. And we had the kids' cooking class on Saturday afternoon, which was really a lot of fun, to see all those kids baking those little cakes in mugs. And we had a good turnout there, too. Probably at least thirty kids came. So it was really, really fun. I think it shows all of us that there's just, there's a lot of support for for things that we can do here to keep people in the community, and several mothers said, "Thank you for having something so I don't have to drive to Plattsburgh." So I think people enjoy being able to stay home and do things right around here. The... Most of the other things are in the planning stages still. Several authors want to come, and they want to talk as part of the author visit. There's interest in chair yoga, which is yoga for people with limited mobility, and so she does the... I'm going to sign the mayor up. So it's a woman from Vermont, and I think we'll try that for a few weeks and see how that goes. One thing that we are going to do again is the International Slow Art Day, and that's on April fourteenth. And that will be one to four P M. We'll use the... Fourteenth. We'll use the Meeting House and Sterling Pocket, so we can use the History Center, so we'll be doing that. And I think that's about it.
Good. Thank you. Ken?
I have no report this evening.
Okay. All right, we'll move our log in. Has a report from the clerk treasurer. Need to do some transfers?
My... Everybody's got their expense revenue report for January.
And we are penciling in some numbers for next year's budget. We will get back to you soon.
In the early pen stages. Early.
Early, early? We definitely need to.
Okay, can do some transfers?
Yes. We need to... We need to transfer to cover our new...
Sidebar?
Sidebar class. We're going to do it from our reserve account, A eight eighty-two to A fifty-one forty-two point two, which is snow removal equipment, a hundred and thirty thousand. The cost of our Atlantic testing, the ground testing, we need to transfer for that, so we're going to transfer from A nineteen ninety point four, the contingency fund, to A fourteen forty point one, engineer. That's thirty-five hundred. And our water budget has been hammered with the breaks and working on the project, so we're going to, we need to transfer thirty thousand, and hopefully will carry us through till the end of the year, into the wages, from F eighty-three forty point two, transmission and distribution equipment, to A, or to F eighty-three forty point one, transmission, distribution, personal services, thirty thousand dollars. It should carry us through the end of the year.
Is that through the over pen?
Yes.
It's everything.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the stated transfers, which total a hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars, I believe.
Total that up, I hurried, didn't I?
Yeah.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this transfer? For a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Frederick.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Any motion to approve to warrant?
We have additional invoices and the amount of three thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-six cents for a total warrant of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand one twenty-four sixty-three.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of this?
What's the, the dragon's... That's a song.
That's what it was, okay. He matched it.
Good. That's excellent.
Constellation, is that the new energy?
Yes.
Provider? We're switched over. I'm glad this took in place. If you notice, if you notice the water with the electric at the wastewater plant.
Does it decrease?
Double.
No, it doubled.
It doubled.
Do you have any idea why? Motor shodding? The only thing I can attribute to is...
Somebody else just mentioned that in January, the bills.
Is it the one that you were looking at today?
Yeah, and there's two thousand...
We used two thousand more kilowatts, and the rate also went from point...
I have it right here.
Zero four to point zero eight eight, which doubled.
I know. I've got, yeah, I wrote that right down. I don't understand. We spent one thousand fifty-eight, and then in December, and January was twenty-six, twenty-four.
Somebody else said that, not here. Somebody said, a whole people talking about all the January bills.
So the rates...
The rates doubled. High demand.
A little over two thousand last month to almost four thousand this month.
I missed it.
You don't pay nuclear center charge?
When it goes to a certain amount, does it change rates? Is that increase of the two thousand kick in a different rate?
No, I don't...
No, it shouldn't. Everybody, I think everybody's, a lot of our bills that we were looking at, some of them, the rates all increased. I don't understand why our rates are not the same.
Every one of those have a different rate.
Well, hopefully to add, I think we should find out.
Different rate. Is that right, Juanita?
What's that?
Every one of the lift stations, blocket, Ashline?
Some of them have the same rate, but some of them, a lot of them are different. I don't understand. But starting next month, everything will be point zero three...
Yeah, the constellation.
Constellation kicks in.
I wonder if we pay based on demand.
Sure you do.
We must. Usually...
As it gets colder, your hand goes up to the table.
Like at Knights of Columbus. At an event, if you spike a high reading, that's what you pay for the whole, for the whole month. That one, that one day can draw your whole month. So I'm assuming that something must have took place when we had a high...
We had a week of cold weather.
Yeah, but it's not the natural gas that we're talking about here.
No, no, not electricity.
Yeah, I know. I mean, we have your natural gas heat there, though, right?
Yeah.
The water plant, so it wasn't the temperature.
And to clarify, that was frozen. We use this alamander in there, so you're only talking, I mean, that's not.
Well, the...
Press rain a little bit, with that hasn't ran for a while, but still.
Well, that, if you don't...
But still, I mean, your rate doubled, too. I don't understand.
More use, the more it's going to cost us.
We have a, there's a few of them.
Oh, I wonder with the, we had a saw in there, too. I wonder with the pumps, the pumps running a lot more with all of the water, with all the I and I.
That could be.
Still doesn't understand your rate going from...
Well, if you pay on demand...
Just double.
If you're paying, if you're paying on demand, and there was a day of high usage, that brings your rate up.
I don't know if it's daily or monthly. I don't know how that's rated, but as cold as it was, too, if everybody's using more, I mean, your rate the whole month goes up, not just the...
Yes, for the whole month.
Yeah.
Well, we'll keep an eye on it and see what happens next month when the, when the new provider... Is it provider, or is it?
Carrier.
Carrier or whatever.
Your electricity supplier.
Supplier. There we go. When that kicks in, it should be less expensive, hopefully.
Well, yeah, that's less than, save half on the cost of the electricity once the rate goes down.
Yeah.
Most we all expected a big decrease because we changed the lights over and...
I don't know.
So it went up instead of down.
No, I was so disappointed.
Okay. Anything else on warrant? Any other concerns, questions?
Hopefully, it's not... Yeah, transmission, distribution, personal services, you're moderate. We answered that one.
Be interesting, and we haven't done it, but to look at the energy difference on Canal Street over the last couple of months. Because this one is, would seem to be quite high at nineteen sixty-one. But I expect that it'll go up with the new water plant online.
It shouldn't. It already went up starting in November, December, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, well, we'd have to go back a couple of months. I'm just wondering if there was a big difference between December's and this one, like there was with the wastewater.
Last month's bill was one thousand eighty-seven sixty-four, and this month's is nineteen sixty-one seventy-one.
So that would almost double as well.
And that rate is also point zero eight eight one nine.
I think they'd get you on the bigger users.
I'm sure.
I wonder if something changed in January. I wonder what they do here, if something changed that you don't know about.
Make sure to warn us, though.
No, but I'm wondering if...
Yeah, maybe.
I would contact NYSARDA in question just to ask why the rate doubled. I don't explain why it happened.
Probably won't matter, you always change that. It shouldn't.
We have to look and see what the water is, but how much we use. What was the total amount used, kilowatt hours? You know, between December, January, and this building? And see if there's a, you know, how they kind of line up there a little bit, hopefully. Whether there was a huge increase in January's usage, kilowatts? But I would assume there would be because you're paying double.
Well, it was two thousand more from December to January.
Yeah.
Kilowatt out.
If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call on the warrant, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Frederick.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. The correspondent, oh, okay, the correspondent.
Yeah.
Mr. Jollicar.
Oh, you can take me if you want.
Oh, no. We don't want to miss yours.
I don't have my, like everybody else, I don't have my report tonight. We've been, lately it's been snow removal. As you mentioned, the new sidewalk machines in, starting to put that to use. Other than snow removal, it's been water breaks. I don't want to say this too loud, but the last couple of weeks, we've finally had a reprieve from it. We had, in a two-week period, we had eight water breaks. So that was, that was enough to keep us more than busy. Other than that, meters are just about complete. I got to do the one on top of Prospect. I got some pumps to remove. There's probably half a dozen left, but the meters are all installed. It's really, it's really probably all I have right now.
Are those the pressure pumps you're back?
Yeah, I got to get up there and get those. We had a few.
Were they all been warranted? Have we...
Yes. Mary?
Yeah, yeah.
She sent it. Most of them have them off, but I...
Well, they're going to start getting charged service charges again, so...
Right, which we'll be reading here, well, around the time of our next meeting, probably, we'll be reading here in middle of March, so... We're going to be sending out papers, I think everybody maybe already has late notices and start shutting off here, no, well, next week. So people have a daily bill, and they're going to start shutting their water down.
Well...
Well, once they get that...
It's not the first time at this circus. We go through this every three months.
I mean, it's the point, there's some repeat offenders. It's getting to the point, they know the drill, it's...
Yeah.
I mean, do we have to send them a late notice or we just shut them off?
Well, we have to warn them first, especially now with the winter.
You can say how long, four hours or...
It's not a reasonable amount of time.
Okay, Mike, talk to us about this bucket.
Tell me you're out of the shower. We've, we did a little digging here a little while ago. We had to dig a curb stop for a house that was, or a dwelling that was, the water was on, the curb stop was broke, it was in a driveway, and it was probably a month and a half or so ago now, and at that time, we had like three feet of frost, hard going. Looking to try to get something, I mean, when you have a water break, usually the water loosens, so it helps us, but if we have to dig shut offs for, to just shut off an emergency or whatever it may be, frozen lines, we need something to get through the frost. There's a, there's a couple of solutions. One is, which is not feasible for us, is a hydraulic hammer. Hydraulic hammer, expensive, fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. You need a, you almost need a second backhoe to do it, because it's not something you can just take off. It's so heavy and interchange. So a less expensive option is a frost or rock bucket. I did price a couple of them. The first one you'll see on there, it was a PSM bucket. It's got teeth on the bottom as well as on the front. You're looking at almost six thousand dollars for a bucket like that. On the back side of that page, the same style bucket through Wayne Bra, which is the company that makes the buckets like that is on our machine now. They'll take a severe duty bucket and weld the shanks on the bottom to put the teeth on the bottom. I think there's three on the bottom plus your front teeth. And you're looking at about thirty-one hundred bucks for that bucket. They basically customize it and build it, you know, for you. If you turn to the next page, the same company makes a V line. It's a V bucket. It's a frost and rock bucket, and it's got the twin tiger teeth on it. That's, I called the company and talked to them and see what, you know, between the twelve-inch wide with teeth on the bottom versus this one, and he said a lot of his preference.
This looks like it would be very effective.
Both will do the job. Yes, this is what I'm leaning towards, the V style. Originally, it was... Originally, I was looking at one, but it was only twelve inch wide, and it's close to our width of our, um, so I'm looking at probably a sixteen inch wide. Um, and I did call today and he's supposed to verify the price, but he said it'd be about twenty one hundred, they figured, because the twelve inch wide one was like eighteen something. So he figured about like twenty one hundred, so that's what I used for a number, plus shipping. Now, at the same time, we need a narrow bucket for a couple of reasons. One is, um, well, electrical, putting electrical lines, you don't need to dig with a twenty four inch wide bucket, but, uh, sometimes we get in spots where you either have a water main, you have a gas line, fiber optic utility, something in the way, and a two foot buckets, too wide to get in between. We need something narrower. Twelve inches is narrowest I can go. Um, I think it's, you're only missing the, the width of the boom by a little bit. That's, that's the narrowest we can go. And if we have any issues with any of the rock trenches that were hammered out, um, most of them were twenty four inch wide. They were spec, some were hair wider than that, but you got a twelve inch main in there. And there's no way to get a bucket to dig past it if we had to. God forbid, I hope we don't have to dig any of them, but, um, I did go look at a bucket. A guy had a used bucket. Uh, he wanted five hundred dollars for a used bucket, or the teeth were welded on, so they couldn't even be changed, and it actually, I could see, you know, a few cracks in it. Uh, that style twelve inch bucket, a brand new one is eight seventy five. So I'm, I'm looking for a frost bucket and a twelve inch wide. You can't really use, uh, a V bottom frost bucket. You really can't use for, uh, you're gonna tear something out.
No, you just, you just need, need that to get down through the frost.
Right. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking the board if it's possible, if we could do both, a sixteen inch wide frost bucket and a twelve inch wide, uh, regular standard bucket. There's a, there's a, the frost bucket, there's a monthly time to get it, so it's probably not gonna do us any good. This, well, hopefully the frost, we don't have to dig in places for us, but it probably won't do any, any good for us, uh, as far as the short term, but in the long term, um, it will. With that being said, if we can, if, you know, you don't have to have it today, I mean, even if we can do this before the end of the budget year or however we gotta do it, but there is a monthly time. If we can find out and say, yes, this is what we want, what they'll do is they'll, uh, draw it out. This is exactly what it is, and they'll send us suspects for it. Is this what you want for that bucket? To make sure that it is exactly what we want. If we, if we do go that route and it's built, instead of having them ship it right away, I can wait. When the main, when the dealer we buy from has other buckets shipped, they can put them with that, uh, either reducing the freight or being no freight. Cause they're so heavy, you're looking at like a hundred and fifty bucks to, to ship a bucket, you know, because of the weight of them. So if we can, if we can save, you know, two or three hundred dollars by having to wait and have them putting with other bucket orders, that's what, you know what I mean? It's not like we have to have it today. So this is something we'd like to get. Don't have to have it today, but, uh, probably now's the time, because there is a monthly time. To get it, at least to get it in the works or to, you know, uh, get it before the end of the budget year, basically.
Do we, do we have money for the common budget for us one year?
I'm looking at.
Well, she's looking for that, like, uh, on this feline bucket.
Yes.
Those teeth can be taken off?
Yes. There were tiger, twin tiger teeth, they call them. They're for rock and frost.
Uh, as I'm looking at this, and maybe I'm wrong, but, um, could this also be used to dig down into, you know, those rock where the water pipe is in the rock blasted out?
Yes.
There, you got a twelve inch line, a twenty four inch, could that be used as well to dig around that?
Yes.
Take the teeth out and?
Yes. The only, the only thing with a regular, um, well, you, you'll still have to have some kind of teeth on them. Yeah, and dig it with just a shank, you ruin the shank, you won't be putting more teeth on them.
Yeah.
So you have to have, uh, teeth on them. The only problem is with a V style bucket, if you hit something, there's only one tooth there.
Yeah.
So most of the time, that one tooth's gonna go through what you.
Well, I guess with your example, you'd have to do a lot of hand shoveling anyway, so.
Well, even with a narrower bucket, um, even with a narrow bucket, usually a twelve inch bucket is three teeth, so on a narrow bucket, we could take an old tooth, and we can weld a piece of plow blade, so that way we've got a flat. You know, when you, if you do get down into the pipes, cause most people will dig with a, um, a flat edge bucket, like a ditching bucket, to dig water mains. I dig them all with a regular teeth bucket, and then, pretty good. Shouldn't say that too.
Is that the up to amount you're looking for?
Yeah, I think it'll be less than that. I, I think said and done, and probably close to three thousand, I'm gonna try to see what I can do to get it down, but that's, at least that would cover it. As far as the price you gave me, that would cover the up to amount, but I, I think that I could talk them into, probably. I gotta, can't, I worded, but I gotta see if I can work on a little bit for the price.
The way things have been, I'd like to see that V line frost bucket here tomorrow.
Yeah, well, I think, I think, you know, he was saying I could leave, but I'm thinking.
Well, it's gonna be a month.
If you got that, a month.
The thing is, if they, other buckets coming and it's getting close, they can probably put it with that order. As they're selling machines now, because that's what they're doing, is they're selling machines, and that's where the buckets come from, for all the case machines. Our loader has that same brand bucket. And I tried to, I called them, and we have to go through a distributor.
Well, but, I guess my point I was making was even if you got it in four weeks, you could, you could use it probably.
Well, yeah, I mean.
You're still talking, a couple of years ago. Still talking March. I can remember a few years ago, it was.
May twenty seventh, or April twenty seventh.
Of course, when the water line froze, it's not, it's not out, the last one.
It's on, it's on, uh, camp in June.
Oh, we're taking in that water?
Oh, man, man.
I don't know.
Streets has fifty nine hundred. We take it out of Streets.
Don't you put that in the water or put that under?
Maybe water.
And Water has twenty four thousand in transmission and distribution equipment.
Take it there.
That's where it really was for.
It's really, it's really for, for water, water main breaks.
We talked about that.
Well, the, the other one will be digging out ditches and stuff like that.
Well, even, we can use it on either, still use that water mains, but I'm thinking, uh, if we can get that drainage tile two in this year in, uh, Spruce Street, instead of digging a twenty four inch trench and having to put stone in, if we can dig with a twelve inch trench,
Yeah.
we've got an eight inch tile, drain tile perforated, that's a lot less of stone and material we gotta put in, cause it always collapses some. We're gonna use less material.
So would someone like to offer resolution for that up to amount?
Yeah, where's the up to amount?
Thirty thirty.
Last page.
That should be good, right?
Yes. I'm hoping to be around three. I'm hoping that I can get rid of freight, but at least that'll cover if I can't for some reason.
Yep. I make a motion to, uh, approve up to thirty two hundred dollars for these two buckets.
Second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, the correspondence, please.
Uh, correspondence from Ken Dell Franch to Village Board, oh, no, correspondence from Code Officer Trump Petro to Bernie Akar. Letter from Ken Dell Franch to Village Board regarding tax payments.
That one was to David Bernier.
I didn't write any letters to Bernie Akar. I didn't write any letters to Bernie Akar.
Oh, David Bernier, I'm sorry. And this week, yeah. Close, yeah, but those are true. Letter from Ken Dell Franch to Village Board regarding employee benefits. Correspondence from Clinton County Treasure with fourth quarter sales tax. Correspondence from Atlantic Testing Labs regarding concrete special inspection. Correspondence from Thomas Renee regarding Casey Gregory case, J C a monthly report.
Any concerns with the correspondence?
I can give you some, let me, I listened from Atlantic.
Yes.
What exactly is this coming? I got it, the whole thing.
Okay, well, all that is, all that is, is a showing that the machine was calibrated correctly.
That's all that is?
That's all that is.
Okay.
The other, and I have not, I don't remember ever receiving, I don't have received a report on what they found on this radar stuff. They pointed out some things. There was a hydraulic lift back here.
Yeah, the only thing we've seen a report on is this, this.
Right. But there was a hydraulic lift back here in the center bay that, that showed up. There was a, there's a pit over here on this side that shows some, something in there, this metal. And then out here, uh, wasn't definite, but they think there may be a storage tank out there.
So that's all this is, is the calibration of the equipment they used.
That it was, that it was used correctly. So the, the next step, and I guess we're into new business, which is okay, the next step would be to drill some holes through this, into the areas, and see what they find.
Dig them with a camera or at that point?
Well, they could, or they draw out samples or do both. But I was, you know, you can see back here in the center bay, there was a, uh, in the center where the hydraulic lift was, and as it comes off, there was probably a pipe, and there was a storage tank there for the hydraulic oil, fuel, or whatever, to make the, to make the lift work. Uh, this one is a pit. I don't know what's in there.
I have a feeling that back one, it probably had air lines and stuff through it. It was probably a chase, cause you gotta have, you gotta have the lines that goes through it.
Yep. So you think it's all was a chase?
I think, I think that was a, back one, I think it was a chase, like a pipe, you know, it had pipes and stuff through it. This one, I don't know.
That's the one I'm not, I'm not too concerned about these two. I'm more concerned about the one that's out here.
Most likely that's the one giving us the problem. So in your report, you mentioned that we're waiting for a recommendation. Do you see to go forward with that drilling?
If there's something from both D E C and from Atlantic Testing. And what they feel is, uh, they have to do the testing first, and then the remediation will come after.
They did this way back. I don't, I don't know why they didn't get it taken care of from the back.
And do they have a report from the last time they did it?
I will call tomorrow and see if I can speed this process up with Atlantic Testing.
It'd been cheaper back then.
Yeah.
You know, they were here for however long. I wasn't here then, but, you know, I'm told.
Yeah, I don't remember what was done.
Oh, it was the D E C guy walking around eating peanuts, so, or something, I don't know what he was doing. He wasn't gonna tell me, so I wasn't gonna ask. He looked mean to me. All right, new business. Um, got a few things here. Resolution to adopt Think Differently Initiative. This is in, uh, this is a request from the County of Duchess, Marcus Jane Molinaro. Think differently, Duchess County initiated foster, welcoming and supportive environment for residents with special needs. I've been nothing sort of amazing since my first letter to municipalities across New York State in two thousand sixteen. Dozens of towns and cities, villages, both big and small, from every corner of the state have adopted Think Differently resolutions, joining our efforts to change hearts and minds and include every individual of every ability into their communities. It looks like a very successful, uh, endeavor. I thought, I guess, I thought that we had passed this, a resolution like this in the past, but couldn't find it, so. If you will bear with me, I will read this, and then we can decide. Resolution to adopt the Think Differently Initiative to assist those with special needs and their families. Whereas, the Think Differently Initiative is about promoting awareness and acceptance of all people and advocating for the inclusion of all individuals living on the autism spectrum and with special needs, and whereas our state and communities are stronger because of our diversity and differences. And whereas for some people with special needs, the very things that make them unique can also keep them on the sidelines, separate from those who might not understand their difference or uniqueness, and whereas it is important to promote and provide guidance for those with special needs on how to access publicly supported services available to them in the community. And whereas, it is important to encourage and educate the community and businesses on ways they can make facilities and services more accessible and how to train staff to welcome and support special needs customers and coworkers. And whereas, the goal of this initiative is to provide a supportive and inclusive environment for individuals of all abilities by supporting community events that expand family friendly opportunities for people with special needs and their families. And whereas, adopting the Think Differently Initiative is an important statement that our village can make to show our support for the differently abled children and adults with special needs and their families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Village of Champlain adopt the Think Differently Initiative so that we are better prepared to communicate with, provide for, and support those living on the autism spectrum and those with special needs. Entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion here? I think it's very good, personally.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
Have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Uh, next on new business, we've already discussed the youth program a little bit, and I will get back to you when we have some, some more information on fields that are available, and we can, um, we can hopefully expand this process to increase our participation resourceful, so that we can have the kids, you know, more kids. I think, you know, there's gotta be more than thirty three kids here that wanna participate in the sports program, so, you know, I remember when my kids were growing up, hell, they had two teams.
Yeah.
Oh, I agree. Do, do we have any more information on the other municipalities?
Well, it's just, right now, it's just gonna be the town and the Village of Champlain that is looking.
Really? Okay.
Uh, we may still have to use the resources of the Village of Rouse's point, but, uh, I think it's, I think it would be wise for us to look and see what we have here first. We may not have enough kids to field a team. And we may have to join the four or fives that we have here, will have to be absorbed into Rouse's point.
Yeah, but they can, but this can be their field.
Yeah, and this can be their field. It'll be a little work on our part, getting them prepared and ready to go, but I think we can, I think we can manage.
We may have to put some backboards in, backstops, something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we can use the elementary school, I believe the backstop is still there, so we can make that the primary. And I think there's a backstop at the Perry, Perry Mills Field as well.
I think they took it down.
Yeah, that's another town, yeah.
No, I think they took it down. They needed, they needed some, it didn't die, need a re, repair.
Did, did, did I not hear that someone, some company here was considering putting a new one up there?
I don't remember that.
Uh, Steve mentioned that a couple times.
Oh, okay.
That Champlain telephone was.
It could be, but I know the one that was there needed quite a bit of work, and I'm almost positive they took it down there a year ago.
There was some big holes in it, as I recall.
When they were doing the playground, I think they took it.
But I recall that in conversation with the, the tablet, that the company was going to put one in there, so. I don't wanna jinx it by mentioning anything here. All right, tree community. You all been copying with that material, I believe?
Yes.
Laughing about over there.
Wait, nice laughing about the tree community?
About drinking it.
Oh.
They're already grown there.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, received an email, uh, from Mary Anna Martin, D E C. And she introduced herself, Mary Martin, volunteer coordinator. Is this the person that you contacted, Janet?
I don't know what email you're, did you just get that?
It's on the other side of the.
On the other side of the.
That's the one that I sent to you.
It's on the other side of that resolution.
Oh, the origi, oh, the original one back in December. Yeah, yeah.
Was that the lady that you contacted?
No, no, it was someone else in New York State to contact, I believe.
Okay.
And I don't, she was on, she's on vacation for another week, the other lady, so I've not heard back from her.
So to become a tree community, there were, uh, there were some things that we had to do. Uh, one, we had to have an Arbor Day celebration.
Yeah.
Two, we had to. Two, we had to set aside in our budget, uh, the recommendation was two dollars for each resident. And, uh, three, help me out here.
The tree committee, the tree.
Tree committee. And, uh, four was to plant some trees.
Yeah, you, you have to have a, a program with, you know, guidelines about proper tree care and.
Okay, it's like an educational process.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so. Village Champlain Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J Sterling Forten proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planning of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed, observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce light, giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Champlain, do hereby proclaim the last Friday of April as Arbor Day in the Village of Champlain, and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And we did that last year, didn't we? Plant some trees on Arbor Day?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this just makes it an official holiday, or an official day.
Day.
Our celebration will not be on that day, though. It won't be on a Friday. It won't, yeah. It will not be on the last Friday of April. I mean, that is maybe officially Arbor Day, but that won't be on our celebration.
We can have it whenever we want. It's just that we are recognizing Arbor Day as a, as a proclamation here. Okay, need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. All right. I know you're tired of hearing me read, but there's a couple more things we've got to add. Resolution authorizing representative to execute engineering planning grant agreement. This is the planning grant for the I N I, the I N I grant that was awarded to us, thirty thousand dollars. There is a twenty percent in-kind match for this, so the total will be, project cost will be a maximum of thirty-six thousand dollars. Need to have a couple resolutions approved here, so that we can move forward with this, get it started as, as efficiently as we can here. Resolution authorizing representative to execute engineering planning grant agreement. Whereas the Village of Champlain has been selected to receive thirty thousand dollars in funding from the engineering planning grant through the New York Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. And whereas the Village of Champlain wishes to access these funds for the purpose of performing an inflow and infiltration mitigation study. And whereas the Environmental Facilities Corporation, E F C, requires an authorized representative be assigned in order to access these funds for engineering services. Now therefore, be it resolved that Gregory Martin, mayor of the Village of Champlain, is hereby authorized to execute a grant agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation, and any and all other contract documents and instruments necessary to bring about the project and to fulfill the Village of Champlain's obligations under the engineering planning grant agreement. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion here? And we still have the processes. We still have to go and do some R F Ps and do some other things to get this. But this is just the first step, so we can access them on either ground. Once we get an engineer on board or whatever, then we can go from there. All right, have a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. I think I can vote for myself there, I guess. Resolution for authorization and appropriation of local twenty percent match for the engineering planning grant. Whereas the Village of Champlain has been selected to receive thirty thousand dollars in funding from the engineering planning grant through the New York Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. And whereas the Village of Champlain has agreed to execute a grant agreement with New York State E F C Environmental Facilities Corporation to access this grant. And whereas the Environmental Facilities Corporation, or E F C, requires a minimum of twenty percent local match of the grant award. Now be it, therefore be it, resolve that the Village of Champlain authorizes and appropriates a minimum twenty percent local match as required by the E P G program for the inflow and infiltration mitigation study project. Under the engineering planning grant program, this local match must be at least twenty percent of the grant award of thirty thousand dollars. The maximum local share appropriated, subject to any changes agreed to by Mayor Gregory Martin, shall not exceed six thousand dollars. The total estimated maximum project cost is thirty-six thousand. Mayor Gregory Martin may increase this local match through the use of in-kind services without further approval from the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain. That's an awful lot of power.
That's what I'm thinking.
This may be a hundred thousand dollar job right here. If there's no discussion, we'll have a roll call here. Nope, I need a, need a motion to approve, sorry.
So moved.
Do we need a second?
Second.
Now we need a roll call, please.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Resolution declaring seeker type two determinations. Whereas the Village of Champlain has been selected to receive thirty thousand dollars in funding from the engineering planning grant through the New York Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program. And whereas the Village of Champlain wishes to access these funds for the purpose of performing an inflow and infiltration mitigation study. And whereas, six N Y C R R section six one eight point five, title six of the New York Code of Rules and Regulations, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, provides that certain actions identified in subdivision C of that section are not subject to environmental review under the environmental conservation law. Now, therefore be it, resolve that the Village of Champlain hereby determines that the proposed engineering report for the inflow and infiltration mitigation study project is a type B action in accordance with six N Y C R R section six one seven point five C eighteen, which constitutes information collection, including basic data collection and research, and is therefore not subject to review under six N Y C R R part six one seven. You understood all that, right? You're probably the only one in the room. Need a motion to approve?
I get the gist.
Yeah, well. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion here? Mike will give us a lesson in seeker stuff, if you want. Nope?
I'm good.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Trombley, Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Okay, uh, old business. I haven't heard from Mr., from Dave about the office renovations, and obviously we're waiting for the results of the radar ground study. The blowers, uh, we have a, we have a webinar on the twenty-eighth of February to talk about blowers, and NYSERTA is sponsoring this. And, um, I guess I got twisted my arm into.
The mayor's gonna be the star.
Part of it there. Okay. It wouldn't go that far, but anyway. So, the blowers are moving forward there, and again, I recommend that the board, that the board, that we start sooner than later, using some of our reserve funds.
Yeah, I agree with that completely.
The way that it is set up with NYSERTA and this fifty thousand dollars is that we can build in for twenty-five percent once the planning phase is completed. We can build in another twenty-five percent once the project has started, and the remaining fifty percent will be built when the project is completed.
Okay, now if we, we're pulling money out of reserve for that?
Yes.
When that grant money comes in, is it replaced in the same account?
Yes.
Okay.
No, you can't just.
No, we can't.
We can't do that?
You can to read, read, put it in reserves at the end of the year.
Okay.
Or we'll close our books at the end of the year.
But we have almost enough to cover this. The estimated is about three hundred thousand.
Right.
And we have two hundred and fifty, I believe.
In reserve account?
Or two seventy-five.
Two something.
Two fifty. Two fifty.
Okay, we have two fifty, so the three hundred thousand was a, was probably a bit higher than it's going to be.
Okay.
At least that's what the engineer shared with me. NYSERTA called and wanted to know if we were going to look at these energy efficiency proposals. This is the same program that we used to change over the, uh, the lights at the wastewater plant. We'll come back. We looked at these others and felt that at this point in time, was the total project cost and our contribution and NYSERTA's contribution, was it worth turning over and doing? If you recall that, we had three different ones there. I asked Mike, and I don't know if he's had the time, but I asked Mike to find an approximate cost to do this, what they are listing here, to do for, to do for a total cost of twelve hundred dollars. With NYSERTA's contribution of five hundred and fourteen, our contribution, our cost would be seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and eighty-six cents to replace, to replace, uh, ten different items at the water plant, the old water plant. What's that?
We'll do it.
So I think it would be easier and less expensive if Mike just picked that up. So, just so you know. The last thing that I have, unless somebody has something else, I'd like board approval to send our staff, D P W staff, to school on March twenty-seventh of two thousand eighteen in Peru, uh, dealing with water issues. Mike, help me out here.
Yeah, that's for, actually, I need it for water credits for their key licenses. No, probably don't need it, it'll be losing his license here.
Okay, so one is, uh, one of the first classes, chemical feed pumps. Uh, second is troubleshooting control modules. And third is asset management. Mike is requesting that we send four people. At twenty-four dollars each would be ninety-six dollars.
It's dual credit, they will get both the water and wastewater.
And this is, uh.
And the rest of them will get six water credits, so.
This is with New York Rural Water Association.
Usually there's none around here if you gotta travel.
We use Detroit often.
Yeah, we try to catch all the ones we can. Peru is really the only.
I make a motion that we send the D P W for this class in Peru at the cost of ninety-six dollars.
Yeah. This is for, uh, what's the title of this? Am I missing any of yours somewhere?
Title?
Yeah. What kind of school? Title of the school? Title of the classes?
Asset management, communication, troubleshooting, control modules, and.
Okay, I thought there was a title.
Oh, wastewater water training.
Wastewater water training.
Add that to the motion.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Water wastewater training for credit hours.
Okay, we have, we have a, we have a motion, we have a second. Normally, normally we would hold one person back here.
Yeah, I know.
But it's in Peru, it's close enough, so if we have an emergency, they can get back here. All right, it's from, uh, seven thirty in the morning is registration, and it goes until three fifteen. So there'll be some travel, there'll be some, perhaps some, hopefully they'll get back before too much overtime is involved here.
Well, there's street time and, and travel time anyways, so.
Okay.
But that morning, we'll hopefully, probably divide up coming half an hour earlier, whatever, do the rounds.
Okay.
Right.
Before, because they'll all be gone.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. If there's no further discussion, we'll roll call to approve this.
You have a second?
Do you have a second? Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. That's all I have. If there's no further information or discussion, or.
We've got another training class, too, I see. No money involved in that one. It's in Potsdam. It's for excavator. The date here, the excavator certified, myself and Jimmy went, and our renewal is up, which is at the, at Barrington Hall on March twenty-second. It's an all-day class. It's put on through with DigSafe. We did go last year, it would be myself and Jimmy.
Just the two of you?
Yeah, we're, that's going through their certified now to get re-certified. There's no cost of the class other than the travel.
To go.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the, uh, the two of them go to the class in Potsdam.
Yeah, have a second?
That's good.
Second?
Second.
Any, uh, any more information? Do we need any more information from Mike on this?
It's here if you want to. Can I actually?
No, it's no money involved.
It's necessary.
It's necessary.
Yeah, don't lose that certification.
Well, that one.
Buckets won't be any good if you.
You have to go to one, you have to go to one a year. You have to get, and it's good, you know, when they have. They have nine, and they're all over Syracuse, and then closest one is Potsdam.
Okay, have a roll call, please, buddy.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Trusty McPatrick.
Aye.
Trusty Trombley.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. I know there's no wa, I know there's no money involved, but still, roll call would be better. All right, now, if there's no further business to come before the board, the motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Have a second?
That's good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.